We noticed, if you remember, a few work sessions ago, we discussed this with regards to our liquor ordinances. Ben Morris and I noticed that the pawnbrokers cross-references were out of date. So instead of bringing this to a work session, we thought we would just bring this right up. There are no substantive changes whatsoever. It is merely just updating cross-references. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Chris? Seeing none, I will open a hearing. Are there any members of the public that wish to address counsel on this issue? And seeing none, I will close the hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2595 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glassbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Ullaberry.
Yes.
We have unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item number nine, ordinance 2596 on first reading. City Council consideration of ordinance 2596 on first reading and ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado, amending Title V, Chapter 12, Sections 1, 2, 3, 5, 7, 8, 9, and 10 to reflect recodification of certain sections of the Colorado revised statutes. This will be handled by City Attorney Ben Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. The justification for this ordinance is identical to the one that Mr. Dowsie just described for the pawnbrokers. This is just as to codification or recodification of the liquor code in the state statutes. When I was preparing for our last new liquor license hearing, I wanted to look something up in the state statute. I followed the reference from our code and I noticed that it was stale. It led us to a section that had been repealed and recodified in a different place. So upon noticing that, I brought it to you in a work session. Would you like for us to fix this in our local code to just reflect the new codification of the state statutes? You all directed me to do so, and this is the result tonight. There is, I would say there are no substantive changes, but that isn't exactly correct. There is one. Section 5-12-5 talks about the penalty. This is a philosophy of legal draftsmanship where I would say it is better to refer back to a section than to repeat its language everywhere. So for our general penalty in the municipal code, instead of restating it here, I changed it to simply refer back to the section where that penalty is actually stated in full. And the reason here is actually pretty clear because this one had gotten stale. It lists an incorrect fine. It used to be a thousand dollar fine. It's since changed. This would simply follow the change without having to provoke us to recodify it every single time we did that. So that's the rationale for that. Everything else should just be, changes to reflect the recodifications. That's all I would have unless you had questions for me.
Are there any questions for Mr. Morris?
I just want to read the very last sentence of Section 1B. And it says, "Anywhere soon agreed by a vendor of the city clerk to issue a temporary license may fail to deny after the city council," which means that you do have the ability to come forward to the city council if the license is not issued. Am I correct?
You are correct. I just want to emphasize I didn't change that. That's how it used to be too.
In the law, but I just wanted to make sure that it was noted.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I will open a hearing. Does any member of the public wish to address the council on this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass ordinance 2596 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Dueling seconds. Roll call, vote please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glassbell.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Ullaberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 10, memorandum of understanding with Montrose Veterans Memorial Coalition. City Council consideration of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Montrose and the Montrose Veterans Memorial Coalition for the creation of the Montrose Veterans Plaza within Cerise Park. And this will be handled by Public Works Manager Jim Scheid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council.
For one moment, please.
Excuse me, Jim.
Yep.
Prior to getting into this, I'm going to need to recuse myself. And I'll go ahead and do it for both matters on number 10 and Agenda Item 11 because I represent the parties involved in both issues. So I will recuse myself from consideration.
And we will give council a read a moment to clear the room.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So as you stated, this is a consideration of an MOU between the city of Montrose and the Montrose Veterans Memorial Coalition. And it is to create a veterans plaza in our Cerise Park. It's right near the existing restroom and gazebo that is in Cerise Park now. There's a map included in the packet to show exact location, kind of a rendering of what it could look like. So this MOU allows the use of the city property. It's owned by the city currently. It also allows some city staff time to be included in the design process and the construction process. And then also clarifies that the city would take on maintenance of the plaza at its completion. It also clarifies that the veterans group would be completing the construction documents and a complete price estimate as one of the first items to be completed. There is a conceptual construction documents that have been created already, and that's what's in the packet. And those just need to be brought to a level where a good construction estimate can be completed on those. And then they would be able to advertise for fundraising, including possibly a sign at the location and other means that they would use for fundraising for the project. And then at that point, they could move through construction. And city staff, myself included, would be involved in that process to eventually bring the project to life. But at this point, we're merely agreeing that we're allowing them to use the property and that they would create the design and fund the construction. Other than that, there's been no changes since we discussed this at work session. And I do know that a good portion of the group is here today, and I know Mike wanted to speak with you all as well. So if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them, or Mike could come up and talk with you as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Scheid? If not, we would accept public comment. If any members of the public would like to address counsel.
That's you.
Jim, Lisa has the handheld mic. Mine may be easier.
Check, check.
Check, check.
Check, check.
There it is. If you would please state your name and address for the record.
Name is Mike Tricky. Address is 14495 6175 Road, Montrose. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today, this evening. Mr. Bell, if you'll remember, it was three years ago this month that we first met, and I presented you with this plan, this opportunity to have some type of a veterans park project. And so here we are, three years later. We've come a long way. It's been quite a journey for us. I know for all the folks that have been involved with it since then. I wanted to just mention one thing, and that is, the one thing I'm most proud of, the past three years, it has happened, and will go forward from here on, and will be a very strong part of the veteran community as we interact with the city. And that is the development of the Montrose Veterans Memorial Coalition. Now, this coalition is made up of all the service groups in town, the DAV, the American Legion, American Legion Riders, the VFW, and Welcome Home Alliance for Veterans. We are also incorporated into a 501(c)(3) at this point as well. So prior to this project, there was a, there was some misunderstanding, I should say, amongst the group. So there was not a big working process between all of us, but now there is. The goal is this plaza, to get this thing completed, but also future projects too, that will also benefit the city as we go forward with this group. So again, thank you for this evening and wish us well.
Thank you.
Jay Bob Bruski, 6100 Road, Montrose. I'm the, also VFW post commander, 784 Road, Montrose, Vice President of the Coalition. So here to do our support on whatever we can for veterans is what it's for, under all organizations.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Your help would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address counsel? Thank you, gentlemen. Yes, and I just wanted to point out that there are two of us on this dais that are veterans, so we appreciate your efforts. Actually, maybe more. Are you, okay. So with no more public comment, we entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Montrose and Montrose Veterans Memorial Coalition as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second. Roll call, vote please.
Dave Frank.
Proudly yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glassbell.
Yes.
Ed Ullaberry.
Yes.
All present voted yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 11.
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, I'd like to thank all the veterans here, present for their service and, and, thank you.
Looking forward to a good partnership.
And you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. If not, if you would like to leave, we'd go ahead and give you a few minutes to do that. Okay, moving on to item number 11. Council chamber dais construction contract award. City Council consideration of the award of a construction contract to Stryker &amp; Company Incorporated in the amount of $237,519.49 for the completion of the city council's security improvements project. This is also handled by Public Works Manager Jim Scheid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So this project started as a security assessment of this room that we're currently in, and knowing that part of the security was related to the dais itself. And so as we began the design process meeting with several different user groups of the area, it was kind of discovered that really the position of the dais is also contributing to some of the security concerns. And so as we looked at different options for how it could be laid out and how it can be secured, we found that there was actually a lot of aesthetic reasons for moving the dais as well. And so that basically led this project into relocation of the dais and making, just shifting it over to the center of the room. And then several other upgrades and features to the dais, but the large change would be kind of relocating this dais to the center of the room. And so we worked with Blythe Group, which is also the architect on our police department project that we're finishing up now. And they worked really closely with our team in designing this space, mainly related to the security of it, but also created the construction documents that we also issued as an RFP. And that was issued in July of this year. We did receive one qualified bid from Stryker &amp; Company. And the bid was in the ranges that we expected. It actually came in almost exactly how we had budgeted for it. Stryker did propose that they begin work in January of 2023 rather than what was originally proposed in October of 2022. And that's mainly due to their availability. And as it turns out, that actually works better for us as well. So pushing this project a little bit helps with the coordination of this building and the new police department. And moving staff that are currently in this building to the old police department for an interim time period while this building's being worked on, it actually benefits everybody to push it off until January anyway. So in addition to the contract that we're recommending tonight, there are a few owner-provided items, as in AV equipment, some of which are already on the dais, the mics that you have. There will be additional monitors as part of this project that would be installed after the construction is complete. And also the carpet material we have already ordered. So this project includes new carpet material in this room and also the first floor of this building. And that material, the city has already procured, just to make sure that it gets here in time. Carpet is a long lead item. It's actually one of the only items we were concerned about being able to get for this project. So we have actually ordered that already, and it should be here on time. And so we, like I mentioned, there's a lot of moving pieces in this building. And may not have realized it until I started this project, but now trying to relocate every use in this room is complicated. There's a city council, of course, our planning commission, our courts, visitor center, OBT, and even having to coordinate with PD and the existing police department is challenging to get everybody moved and relocated for... We are looking at about a 12-week construction timeframe. Would not all be in this room, but in the building for approximately that long, so... Other than that, there's been no changes since we talked about it at a work session, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Scheid?
I only had one question to be answered.
Perfect.
Well, wait, I can't make it any easier. Let me throw you on this. Are we getting the same kind of carpet that we got in the pavilion? I'm just wondering if it's a similar look to that.
Similar type. Doesn't, not the same look.
Okay.
It's a, it's meant for a high-traffic municipal building, so it's of a much different quality than this. And a little different look. So it's, I would say similar to the pavilion in more of a modern look, but of a different type than this carpet.
Okay.
Again, meant for high traffic in a municipal building.
Good. Thank you.
One of the other components of this is repainting and freshening up and patching little holes in the walls and so on, so...
Yeah, that's true.
I think it's going to be really beneficial and make the entire space look a little bit better, a little bit more warm, all things.
Yep, definitely. Yeah, paint and carpet throughout the whole building.
I think there's some major changes, changes going on also with electronics in here so that we can better provide access to people outside and volume here.
Yeah, and Greg may be able to add more on that, but yeah, there's, some of the items are already installed, and then there would be additional as part of this project once the dais is moved, upgrading as we go.
Would you like, Mr. Story?
Yeah, so the majority of the upgrades are already almost complete, and in two weeks, they come to finish what's left. What's going to be added for you guys is the monitors that you have. The mics that you have are going to be a little bit different, so they won't be glowing in your face when you're speaking. The mics that you have are going to be a little bit different, so they won't be glowing in your face when you're speaking and that sort of stuff. Higher-quality mics. The reason we got these is just lead times. These were available. The ones we typically use, the higher-quality ones, weren't available, so that's why we went there. And then I think that's, and just, you know, plugins and stuff for your laptops to make it a little easier for you to, a little bit more space for you to have your laptop out to use the new Civic Clerk thing. So that's all got to be plumbed into the new dais as it's built, and then plugged back into all the stuff that's happening back there. So kind of a lot of, like you said, a lot of moving pieces.
Very good. Any questions?
These'll stop tipping over if we touch them.
Well, that's the goal, anyway. We'll see, you know, best-laid plans. That's right.
Thank you. All right, we'll accept public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the award of a construction contract to Stryker &amp; Company Incorporated in the amount of $237,519.49 for the completion of the Council Chamber Security Improvement Project as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
Doug Glassbell.
Yes.
Ed Ullivary.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote of all present.
Thank you. If someone would, oh, well, I can just, I think you can see us. Retrieve counsel to read. And now, moving on to item 12, our staff reports. Are there any reports from staff? Making life easy. I don't know what to do. Gosh. Okay, moving on. Item number 13, City Council Comments. I have one I would like to make, just for the members of the public that are tuning in. We started off the evening by swearing in three new officers. Those officers are the initial first class through our Western Colorado Law Enforcement Academy, based here in Montrose, done in conjunction with Colorado Mesa University. And we just want to acknowledge the hard work as a council and public that it has taken from our city staff, our liaisons with CMU, and especially our rock stars in Montrose PD. Chief Hall, we salute you for the hard work you've done. Also Sergeant Courtney Jones and Officer Dave Copeland. The amount of work it took to make this do is amazing. But not only that, the fact that a number of our officers on the PD served as instructors and trainers, as well as participation from our legal staff to make this not only a success, but just a glowing success. As Chief Hall pointed out earlier, that every member that took the law enforcement post-training certification passed, giving us a 100% success rate. So we're setting the bar awfully high, and I have absolute confidence in our abilities to surpass that next class. Thank you.
Legal staff.
For it also. Any other comments from counsel? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.